From closed session, I would ask our city attorney to please report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The council is in closed session this evening. Conference of Legal Counsel on Existing Litigation, Farron versus City of Galt. There's no action to report on that item.
Thank you. Do we have the roll call, please? Yes. Councilmembers Powers, here.
Singleton.
Aye.
Shelton.
Cruz.
Aye.
Payne. Present. At this time, I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayers. That will be followed by the flag salute. Then I would ask Councilman Singleton to lead us in that, please.
Do we have the voice count?
Oh, excuse me. Voice count trip 119 will lead us in the flag salute. I don't know what's wrong with me.
Please stand for the presentation of the colors. Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Will the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, reform. Forward.
Never forgot about you. After I just was talking to you, too.
I was gonna say.
Yeah. Thanks.
Well, you had to promise, I didn't have to.
It's fine. Would you read the video segment, please?
Yes, this meeting of the Galt City Council has been videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.c.i.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address counsel should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing counsel and state your name for the record. Also, please silence all cell phones.
I'm going to ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions?
Madam Mayor, there is an item that staff is requesting to be added to the agenda this evening, and it relates to the approval of the Transportation Development Act amended claim. This item was presented at the last city council meeting, and the request is to add it to the agenda this evening so it can be acted on by way of resolution. There is, under limited circumstances, the ability of the city council to act on items that are not on the agenda. One of those limited circumstances is if the city council approves by a two-thirds vote the action on an item that came to the attention of staff after the agenda was posted and there's a need for immediate action. After the agenda was posted, we were notified by CACOG that if they did not have a resolution adopted by the city council prior to their next meeting, which actually is before your next meeting, they would be unable to consider our Transportation Development Act claim. Due to the amount of the claim, the city standard to lose interest on about a million dollars if this action was delayed until October. So for those reasons, it is requested that the city council entertain a motion to add this item to the agenda. If the motion does pass, it would be added as item G3 on your agenda under Public Works Department to be the third item under that portion of the agenda.
Okay, so now the council would like to decide if they want to add this to our agenda. It requires a motion and a vote.
Motion to add to the agenda, please.
In a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. So this will be added to the agenda as G3.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to presentation.
Okay, our first presentation is sanitary sewer management program.
Let me introduce it, then I'll hand out council packets as well, as well as the overheads. I'd like to introduce Aiden Selby as your street superintendent, which you know better than you know me at this point. But he's going to give you a presentation on something that your council first adopted here a couple of years ago and give you a status update and let you know kind of what's in store for you. So, Aiden, if you can get started, I'll pass this out.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Tonight I'm presenting a brief overview on the City of Galt Sewer System Management Plan. The State Water Resources Control Board issued a waste discharge order in May of 2006. The order required Galt and all municipal sewer agencies to begin reporting sewer overflows electronically. The order also required the development of a sewer system management plan. Galt was required to complete the plan and have council approval by August of 2009. The city council approved the plan in July of 2009. What's the purpose of an SSMP? Properly manage, operate, and maintain all portions of the agency's wastewater collection system. Provide adequate capacity to convey peak wastewater flows. Minimize the frequency of sanitary sewer overflows. Mitigate the impacts of sanitary sewer overflows that may occur. And meet all notification and reporting requirements. There are 11 elements in a sewer system management plan. The first element is goals. Providing safe, responsive, and reliable sewer services is the ultimate goal. We accomplish this by performing preventive maintenance to reduce sewer overflows and prevent public health hazards. Types of preventive maintenance will be discussed later. The second goal is organization. The city must identify the names of responsible or authorized representatives, including the chain of command for reporting sanitary sewer overflows. Names and telephone numbers of all management, administrative, and maintenance personnel responsible for implementing specific measures in the sewer system management plan, including line of authority as shown in an organization chart. The third element is legal authority. The city must demonstrate through collection system use ordinances, service agreements, and other legally binding procedures that it possesses the necessary legal authority to enforce any violations of its sewer ordinances. Title 14 of the Galt Municipal Code titled Wastewater Services provides legal authority to satisfy this element. The fourth and largest section of the Sewer System Management Plan has five parts, operations and maintenance program. The first is collection system mapping. The city must demonstrate, excuse me, the city must maintain up-to-date maps of its collection system. Alex maps are carried on all streets, service vehicles, and are updated periodically. Prevented operations and maintenance. The city shall prioritize its preventive maintenance activities to maintain the integrity of the system and reduce the frequency of sanitary sewer overflows. We have a schedule for quarterly cleaning of problem areas which addresses this requirement. We're also systematically cleaning and televising the entire city. We're trying to do 10% a year. To date, we've done approximately 25% of the system, and we're on target to complete citywide cleaning and televising by the year 2020. Rehabilitation and replacement program. The city has various sewer-related capital improvement programs to address deficiencies in the collection system. Additionally, the recently adopted Utilities Master Plan identifies areas needing rehabilitation and/or replacement. Employee training. The city is required to provide training on a regular basis for staff in sewer system operations. The city provides in-house training at bi-weekly safety meetings. The city also uses outside organizations to provide training. Additionally, continuing education is required for collection system operators that are certified. Final part of the ONM program is equipment replacement inventory. The city maintains an adequate inventory of replacement parts and equipment to minimize facility downtime in the event of a failure. Large equipment replacement, including the purchase of combination sewer cleaners, is included in the capital improvement program. We just took delivery of a new combination sewer cleaner last Friday to replace the current unreliable 14-year-old sewer cleaner. I'd like to personally thank council for approving that purchase. I couldn't find anything to drive down here today, so I drove it down here. And I'll wait till after council meeting. Hopefully, it's not going to go too long tonight. If anybody would like to look at it, I'd be free to show it to you.
As long as you don't damage it, okay?
Okay. I was worried about scratching it, so. There's a picture of it. You've seen it. I didn't plan on bringing it. Somebody thought it'd be a good idea. Element five is design and performance provisions. The city must have design and construction standards and specifications for the installation of new sewer systems, pump stations, and other ordinances, and for the rehabilitation and repair of existing sewer systems. Excuse me. I'm going backwards. The city follows Sacramento County Improvement Standard Construction Specifications. Element six is overflow emergency response plan. The collection system must develop and implement an overflow emergency response plan that provides procedures for sanitary sewer overflow notification, response, reporting, and impact mitigation. The response plan is a standalone document and summarized in a sewer system management plan. The city utilized an outside consultant to create the program. Each service vehicle has a field guide that one followed provides step-by-step instructions for the first responder to competently respond to sewer overflows. Element seven is fats wells and grease or fog control program. The city must evaluate its service area to determine whether a fog program is needed. At the time of adoption, current ordinances were sufficient to meet this requirement. As we move forward, we'll look at the ordinances and see if we need to strengthen or add more to prohibit fog into the, anybody putting fats wells and grease into the sewer system and causing clogs. Element eight, system evaluation and capacity assurance plan. The city shall prepare and implement a capital improvement program to provide capacity of key sewer system elements and their peak flow conditions. Utility master plan identifies areas that are deficient and capital projects that have been created to rehabilitate and/or replace deficient components of the system. A great example is the pending construction of the new live oak lift station. Element nine is monitoring management and plan modifications. The city must maintain relevant information that can be used to establish and prioritize appropriate sewer system management plan activities. The city tracks several performance measures through tracking logs and annual reports, including the number, cause, and locations of stoppages and sanitary sewer overflows. Records are kept on routine preventive maintenance, including amount of cleaning and televising performed annually. Television inspection records are stored on the server and used to identify problems and schedule maintenance activities. Element 10 is Sewer System Management Program audits. The city shall conduct periodic audits of the Sewer System Management Plan. This is required every two years. Staff's currently auditing the program to ensure that elements are up-to-date and any new programs such as television inspection program are reflected in the Sewer System Management Plan. The final element is communication program. This element was a requirement during the development of the Sewer System Management Plan. At the time of development, draft elements were posted on the city's website to provide for opportunity for public comment during the development stage. The Sewer System Management Plan is available on the city's website for the public to view. For progress update, since the adoption of the Sewer System Management Plan, we've reduced the number of sanitary sewer overflows through increased problem area cleaning. We were able to purchase a closed-circuit television trailer in 2010, which allowed us to begin citywide cleaning and television inspection, also in 2010. We were able to purchase a replacement Vaccon, which we took possession of last Friday. 80% of the street staff are certified in wastewater collection. This slide just illustrates the number of sanitary sewer overflows we've had since year 2007 when we were required to begin electronic reporting of overflows. You see, year 2008 is kind of an anomaly. We hadn't adopted the plan by then. But we had three overflows from the same anthole within a three-day period. We installed a sonar detector that notifies key personnel when the level reaches a certain point. This allows us time to respond and mitigate any problems before an overflow occurs. There have been no overflows at this location since we installed the sonar detector. Two of the overflows were a result of the farmer damaging the forest main at the wastewater treatment plant. Two others were for failures at the live oak lift station, and there was one routine overflow caused by debris. So as you can see, seven of the eight were kind of strange. But since 2008, our records have been very good. We had none in 2009 and one each for the successive years. There's no argument to the question that if an agency will have an overflow, it's when will it have an overflow? Overflows have been significantly reduced since adoption of Sewer System Management Plan in 2009. Looking forward, as I said, working on a biannual update of the Sewer System Management Plan and hope to have this completed by the end of September. Recently began a comprehensive lift station cleaning program with the addition of the new sewer cleaner. We'll be able to step this up and continue it. And as I stated, we'll be bringing the plan back to council in 2014 for recertification. This is due every five years. And that ends my presentation. I'll answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions for Aiden?
Real quick, Aiden. As you showed us on that graph up there, you had one year, 2009 on. Just out of curiosity, does it have anything to do with the live oak station?
One did. Actually, probably two.
And we'll resolve that as soon as that's taken care of.
Yes.
Thank you.
The other, Councilman Singleton.
Aiden, how are you tonight?
Good.
Good. Now that that's over. I, uh, I liked your presentation. I just have some real quick questions. You had mentioned the SSO plan. Are there ways that we physically, our staff goes out and physically tries to prevent these overflows?
Yes, we have a list of problem areas that are typically older, flatter lines that have some fog problems. And they're on a list that we clean quarterly, some even monthly. And then with the addition of the television inspection program, we're able to actually look at these areas. In the past, when we had overflows, we broke, we cleared the overflows and cleaned the line, but never knew if there was a structural problem, a grease problem, a debris problem. We just cleaned it, cleared the blockage, and went on our way until the next one happened. Now that we have the trailer, we can go televise the line once we clear the blockage and see if we've effectively taken care of the problem or if we need to do something else.
That's a good segue into my next question was, how does this closed-circuit television, just briefly, I mean, how does this work in the line? Is it a set camera in that line or how's that work?
Yes, it's a camera on a tractor that's independently driven.
Oh, okay. It's a structured line.
So, operators put it into the main line, and they drive it down. It's got 1,000 feet of cable on it.
Oh, okay.
Records everything. They check taps, sewer laterals to make sure there's no protruding taps. They just inspect the line all the way down. It's recorded, and then when they come back, they download it to the server. And we need to ask Matt for some more space on the server.
Don't you just love technology? I've got one more question here. In your emergency response plan, I'm assuming, I guess, you would consider, is an overflow considered an emergency? Or what do you consider the emergency if it's not the overflow?
An overflow is an emergency.
It is the emergency.
A backup stoppage, a report of a stoppage is an emergency to us.
Okay.
On-call personnel would come out to check that.
And so as soon as an emergency occurs, then your plan, the plan is to, we send somebody out and get it?
Yes. During hours, call directly, public works after hours, police dispatch, and somebody will be dispatched and be here within 30 minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Aiden. Good presentation. Thank you.
Very good presentation. Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? If not, I agree that was a very good presentation. Thank you, Aiden. And we all know how important this is to us, so thank you for sharing with us. Okay, we will go to public comment now.
Under Government Code, Section 5495-4.3, members of the audience may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. As a courtesy to others, please silence your cell phone.
And I have no speaker sheet. No speaker sheets, okay. Then would you, if you would like to bring it forward, now's the time.
I guess I was kind of waiting for you to walk around for my phone.
Good evening, Mayor and councils. I have a couple of questions, and I'm just kind of looking for some insight. Is this on? Can anybody hear me?
Would you identify who you are and if you live?
Oh, sure. My name is Mike McCune. I live within the City of Galt. I've spoken with several of you a few times, Jason quite a few times. I just have a couple of questions. It's been based on the healthcare for city council members. And it was brought back in July 16th, I believe it was. July 19th, or I'm sorry, June 19th. There was a discussion about healthcare for the city council members with CalPERS. And later on, it came up, and it was, I believe, Mayor Barbara Payne had asked if this CalPERS related to elected officials. At that time, I believe Jason Broom, haven't seen your last name, Mike? Bear, I'm sorry. Related that it wasn't, it was only for full-time employees. Then later on, on July 3rd, the city attorney had brought the healthcare issue back up and had discussion on it. I watched a little bit on the video a couple of times. I couldn't get quite all the information I wanted to. I watched another part of it on July 17th, and the city attorney brought it back up. It was just basically, you guys discussed the topic, nothing exactly what went on or how it came about. So I have a couple of questions, three questions, and if you can get back to me in writing, I would appreciate it and kind of let me know how we all came about this. My first question is, in the recent changes that were made by the council member package benefit, what was changed from the prior to the new one? My second one is, what is the current benefit package for the past council members? And how long can they collect benefits after leaving office? Did this portion of the benefit package change also? My third question to this whole thing is, what cost impact does this have on the city, the council members, or the assistants themselves?
Is that it?
That's my three questions.
Okay. I know you've asked for them for your answers in writing, and I'm sure our city manager will be willing to do that, but it seemed like your questions were pretty easy to answer. Would you want to respond to them now, or would you rather do it in writing and?
Some of them I'll definitely need to take a look back and see and do something in writing. That would be profitable. Actually, I don't know if I got them all written down fast enough.
Do you want me to re-write them?
Have a copy of it. You can leave with me, then I can make sure I address all of your questions. That would be helpful. I can just send it to your email?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. That's really fine.
That'd be great.
Okay.
How many of the council members are enrolled in the health insurance? I think there's only one.
I believe there's one.
Just one, yeah. And the rest of us are not participating in the program.
Most of the changes that were made recently to the healthcare were basically resulting from us moving from separate brokered plans through Kaiser and Health Net to the CalPERS health plan. So we needed to adopt some resolution that basically allowed the council to also move with the other employees to the CalPERS health plan. So the actual benefits and coverage provided to the city council has always been similar to the city employees. There's no benefits provided after the council members leave office. It's only while they're in office. And the benefits have stayed similar or the same that the other employees receive. And that did not change as a result of the actions that were taken this summer. Really, all the moves were simply to move all the employees, as well as the city council members, onto the new CalPERS health program. And there were some actually cost reductions that came to the city by doing that.
And you'll show me those reductions and how you came to that conclusion?
Yeah. I can put that in the email.
Madam Mayor, if I could also add that the ability of council members to get health benefit coverage is governed by state law. And state law does put a cap on the amount of benefit for council members. The council members cannot receive more than the maximum amount of benefit provided by the management group. And there are limitations on the ability to get health coverage after leaving office. And the ordinance that we just adopted is in conformance with those requirements established by state law.
Thank you for that. I think today we want to be very transparent with whatever actions that we have that concern the city council members, especially the elected officials. So thank you for that clarification. And I'm sure you'll get the rest of your information as soon as possible.
Okay, do we have?
Just send me a copy of that and try to get it to you as soon as I can.
Okay. Sure. I have a second thing. Is that okay? It's not on the agenda. But it's, I have a different.
It's not on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda. It's actually nothing to do with the agenda. I just said nothing.
I believe you have 19 seconds. That's what I just cleared off the clock.
Then I would try for another day then.
I can.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, council.
One of the things I would say to the audience, the council and the staff are very responsive to any inquiries that the citizens may have. It often is more efficient if you do email the city manager or the city clerk to get your answer after it's been researched. But you're certainly welcome to bring up anything. Okay, so where are we now? Consent calendar, I believe. Is that right?
We have two items on consent tonight. The first one is approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of August 21st, 2012, and approval of the City of Galt warrants. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Was there any discussion on those items? If not, I would call for the vote. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously with one council member absent.
Next item. Next item is, sorry, Public Works Department under Regular Calendar. Authorize expedited actions to complete the Twin Cities widening project from Bertrand Road to east of Fermoy Way.
Good evening, council members. I'm going to have our interim city engineer and deputy public works director, Gwen Owens, give you a brief presentation on. give you a brief presentation on this item. This is one of the major special assignments along with the next item that you'll hear subsequently that she has been brought on board to assist with as the city continues to sort of gel its new staff for public work. So, with that, Gwen, if you'd take the presentation, please.
Thank you. Let me give you a little bit of background before I go into what we're requesting. Currently, the Twin Cities roundabouts has an anticipated construction start date in spring of two thousand thirteen with an anticipated, no, that's not on sight, sorry, with an anticipated completion date in late fall of two thousand thirteen. These improvements will address traffic capacity issues at Twin Cities Road and Highway ninety-nine. Concurrently, Walmart is working to expedite their private development project at the southeast corner of Twin Cities Road and Fermoy Way. The Walmart will be constructing their furniture improvements along the south side of Twin Cities Road and the east side of Fermoy Way. Between the two locations on Twin Cities Roads, there's only currently one westbound lane. The proposed widening project will add a second westbound lane. They'll also modify the signal, the traffic signal at Fermoy and Twin Cities and include other miscellaneous improvements along the corridor. These improvements are not required for Walmart, but will address its existing traffic capacity issues. Ideally, the roadway widening will be in place either before or concurrently with the Walmart project. These improvements will make Twin Cities Road a cohesive roadway with a high capacity from east of Fermoy to west of, to West Stockton, sorry, the West Stockton Roundabouts. Concurrently, through this whole process, several meetings have been taking place with staff, Caltrans, Walmart, Galt Village, and a future developer of the southeast corner of Twin Cities Road and East Stockton Road to discuss the ultimate improvements. Staff has requested OmniMeans provide a design proposal for the widening as an amendment to their current roundabouts contract. An amendment to the existing roundabouts agreement has been prepared for the widening. Staff understands that there has been concerns regarding the use of OmniMeans. We felt for the widening due to the knowledge that OmniMeans has about the roundabouts and the requirement to move quickly, that OmniMeans is a logical choice. I should note that staff is currently reviewing proposals for construction management services for the roundabouts, that OmniMeans is not one of the candidates. Additionally, staff has been working with Walmart, with Walmart representatives, in regards to a pre-payment of their traffic impact fees to fund the project. A payment agreement between the city and Walmart is currently underway. The agreement would provide for an initial payment to cover the preliminary studies and design work, a second payment for the remaining of the fees to be provided by Walmart prior to the construction contract being awarded. Please keep in mind that these fees are tied to the land and will be applied to the developer fees that are required for Walmart to actually pay when they pull their building permits. The proposed widening project needs to move quickly to catch up to the roundabouts project. Therefore, staff is requesting the city council authorize the city manager to act on behalf of the city and to execute the agreement with Walmart when finalized. That's my brief overview of what the staff report is.
Any questions? Any questions? Councilman Singleton?
Yes, of course. On the widening there at Fermoy, we're going to be widening to add an additional lane in the westbound direction, correct?
Correct.
Also, on the Fermoy itself, if I'm to understand correctly, they're going to be, they're going to be installing two left-hand turn lanes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we also depend on Caltrans to, that's up to them to get that pushed through, correct?
I think we would be required to get an encroachment agreement from Caltrans. We've been working with Caltrans in regards to what the improvements are along the entire quarter because there's some access changes that will be happening that we've been dealing with Galt Village and also Caltrans. They are onboard and Caltrans actually is very supportive of this project and they have committed to trying to have the encroachment permit processed as quickly as possible.
That was my next question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Funds for this, I know that we're kind of tight on time. Where are they coming from? Are they coming with Measure A or?
The funds are actually coming from Walmart. So, Walmart, when they pull their building permits, are required to pay building permit fees, traffic impact fees. So, what we've done is because Walmart sees the benefit of this project moving forward, we're working with Walmart for them to prepay their fees in two installments. The first installment would cover the design costs and the right-of-way, and then the second installment would actually cover the construction of the widening.
And it's going to meet with our timeline as far as the money's coming in? Nothing's coming out of general fund?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If I might add, Madam Mayor and Council, we're essentially taking some of the budget authority for the capital improvement project on the roundabouts project, which we haven't awarded a contract for, and using that to fast-track, but the intent would be to backfill with the cash if and when we close the deal with Walmart on an advanced payment plan.
That's what I was going for.
So, we're essentially sort of borrowing from Peter to pay Paul until Peter pays up, but felt that was the best way to not lose a construction season and basically have to go another winter with only one lane in the westbound direction.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just have one comment too. So, with Walmart, so to speak, onboard, this means that things are moving along. There's, you know, there's a lot of thoughts about when Walmart's going to come in and how long it's been taking for the building permits and the redistributive, the planning. Is this still going on track and going pretty fast? It's been a long time just to-
The answer is, we're looking to pin them down. They, all signs point to them moving forward, although there have been repeated commitments made to when we begin to see their improvement plans and their building plans, and those have been repeatedly delayed. So, I guess, as they say about operates, not over till the fat lady sings. In our case, until we have a signed agreement with them and they prepay some money, that's when we're going to know, which is why we're trying to expedite development of that agreement and put the ball in their court. If they were not willing to execute that, it would be a signal to us that there were concerns and we would immediately stop moving forward with design and spending funds that they haven't committed to pay, so.
Because I am really concerned about how long all this is taking.
It's a big project.
There's a lot of, you know, of our constituents out there.
It's a big project, would be, we think, beneficial to the city. They're also a large national corporation that can, board of directors can change their mind on projects as they look at economic factors. So, our goal would be to try to get them to commit as soon as practical and put their money where their mouth is, so to speak, on upfront payment of these fees before we get too far down the path of spending the money.
Well, I think what's important too with citizens or council members is they haven't, the plans aren't with us. So, Walmart has not submitted their plans. We cleared all the legal hurdles, you know, back in February, and they have not submitted their plans yet to the city. And we can't react or review anything until we receive their public improvement plans as well as their building permit plans. And only Walmart knows why they haven't submitted those yet. So, as soon as we receive those, then we'll review those as quickly as we can and get them turned around and get them their building permit as quickly as we can. We're trying to get the other roundabout and widening project moving, but until we get Walmart to submit those plans, until they make some of these commitments, we don't control that schedule. It's in their court.
I just want to make sure we're not throwing our money down a hole.
I think that's what we're trying to-
Yeah.
Ensure that we don't do that.
Yeah. And we've already got, we've got a draft agreement to them for these fees, and so we won't spend the money until we make sure that we've got this agreement, at least conceptually approved from Walmart. And what we've been told by their engineers that are working on it is Walmart's, we wouldn't be bringing this to you tonight if we didn't think, and Walmart hadn't given us preliminary indications that they were supportive of this concept.
Any other comments? Do we have to do any additional EIR issues on this or studies to widen this road?
Well, I'll look to Gwen to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that you've already approved the environmental for the project, Gwen.
General plan?
There's actually environmental that needs to be looked at for the widening. The actual extent is not known because we're in the process of doing those biological studies now. It's assumed that it would be a mitigated NEDD.
So, it wouldn't take a lot of time, you think?
With mitigated NEDD, it would factor into the schedule of what we currently have, so we would be within our timeframe.
Okay. I think moving on this actually is encouraging.
Yeah.
Any other questions? And would you read the recommended action by the staff, please?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager, subject to city attorney concurrence, to take necessary actions to expedite the completion of the Twin Cities Road widening project from Bertrand Road to east of Fermoy Way, including, number one, execute amendment number eight to the design services contract with OmniMeans in the amount of two hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars with a contingency of up to an additional twenty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars. And number two, execute a fee payment agreement with Walmart.
Okay, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion?
Will accept.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. You have your resolution. It's passed unanimously. Thank you. Next item.
Next item. Sorry, this messed up. Okay, number two, under public works, authorize the city manager to execute contract amendment number fourteen to the agreement with OmniMeans for Central Galt interchange landscaping modifications in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and approve project contingency of two thousand, three hundred fifty dollars.
Madam Mayor, this is the other major project that I was pleased to see coming to fruition as I was contemplating accepting this position. And as you are aware, they're not ready to start paving and that'll be sort of the beginning of the end of the structural improvements. And then our goal is to bring back a follow-up project, which is this change order would be to finish the final design for the landscape. And Gwen, why don't you walk us conceptually through what we'll be doing with this finishing up of the finalizing of the plant?
Thank you. Just let me back up a little bit. In June of two thousand eight, city council approved the master plan, concept one. The actual, this is actually shown on the screen. The master plan includes Phase One, which actually addresses the environmental mitigations and has fourteen additional phases after that. The landscaping plans were halted at the ninety-five percent completion level in December of two thousand eight because at that point in time, the city was not ready to actually go out with construction and Caltrans would not approve the landscaping plans until the project was ready to, was ready for construction. Given the fact that the interchange is wrapping up and we're looking at completion in October, the landscaping plans are anticipated to go out mid-late winter with a construction start date sometime in spring of two thousand thirteen. It's anticipated that what we will do is we will do the mitigation measures, which is Phase One, and then we will also put out as part of that is median landscaping. The remaining twelve phases will be funding-dependent and could happen independently of each other and could happen at any particular time when funding is available. The contract amendment for OmniMeans is to complete the plans and specifications, which include items such as converting from metric to English. When the interchange plans are actually in metric, when these plans were designed, they were required to be in metric. Caltrans has subsequently changed to English, and so we have to change them to English for them to look at the plans. Another item is for OmniMeans to respond to both Caltrans and city comments. The person that originally reviewed the plans is not currently the landscaping person at Caltrans now, so there'll be some review with that. Additionally, OmniMeans will prepare a draft maintenance agreement with Caltrans and process it. Caltrans incorporates them. Any questions?
Is that costing us more money because they've changed people there?
Well, clearly going from, you know, metric to English, there's some conversion that costs a little bit of money. Depending upon how many comments we get from Caltrans will dictate how much money. Hopefully, it'll be pretty minimal because when these, when the plans were developed, they were developed with Caltrans and their guidelines and requirements.
Is there no consideration that when the plans were first looked at, they were under, and I may get lost, was it metric?
Yeah.
And then subsequently, they changed to-
Standard.
-English or standard or English?
That was one of the questions that we initially asked and Caltrans has basically said that we have to change them to English.
And we don't have any recourse or any help with the cost and that?
We can ask again, but Caltrans, it's their facility. They tend to like to do things their own way. So, we can ask the question again to see if there's any relief that we might get, but I suspect the answer would be no.
Okay.
I may, Madam Mayor, that is a statewide, sort of their regulatory oversight and it doesn't vary from district to district. We're in District Three here with Sacramento County. I come from District Ten, which was San Joaquin and south, and we're going through the same thing there. When I left, on a multimillion dollar set of plans that we, there was a hard cutoff in the statute. State mandated that everybody go to metric. That was a governor's executive order. And then that received so much pushback from the industry and was costing to implement that they've now reverted and mandate that you can no longer use those metric plans. This was sort of, unfortunately, just due to timing, was kind of caught in the time warp between those two periods of time and the several years that have gone by have put this past that required date. We actually have, part of the reason there was pushback was that they were finding that, you know, when you go to purchase supplies, everybody sells things in English units in the United States. And so unless you're going to buy it overseas, which we don't encourage, that there was actually a cost savings to going back. So, hopefully, we'll get some competitive bids if we get this out to bid for Phase One over the course of this winter. We still have a pretty favorable bidding climate, so hopefully the damage won't be too bad compared to the price of getting the project in.
That's encouraging.
So, how long do you think it'll be before they change it back to metric? The next stage is in a budget crunch or what?
I think they're going to leave it alone for a while. They've got enough other things to pay attention to, so hopefully we'll get it done before they start thinking about that.
Thank you.
Now, I have a concern from one of our citizens that lives on that road that is on the east side of ninety-nine and it's, I guess it would be south of Bosso. And his concern is that with this new interchange, he's getting more noise and possibly fumes from the interchange. And he had asked if there was something that we could do to help alleviate that with some landscaping.
I have an exhibit over here. I'm just going to go over and-
Okay.
Turn over.
She's putting up her exhibit, if I may, Madam Mayor. The mitigation plans and the sound walls are part of the mitigation plan are to mitigate new impacts. I don't have a history, but I understand in talking with staff, this gentleman has been complaining about the noise for some time. The interchange hasn't opened yet. Those off-ramps are not open yet. So, any noise he's experiencing are existing conditions. And this project was not designed and the environmental requirements were not to mitigate for existing historical problems, to mitigate going forward any increased noise levels or increased visual concerns. And so, that's what the project does, is to not go above and beyond what the law requires. And there's a fairly extensive amount of mitigation between the sound wall and the planting. And Gwen's going to describe what Phase One and the mitigation work would do and where he is in relation to that.
Okay. So, basically the sound wall, this is the resident over here. The sound wall goes a little bit past the elbow, and this shows the planting. So, as Steve said, the sound wall mitigates the increased traffic for the ultimate condition. There is a little bit of planting over here that it will help, even though the planting is actually for the environmental requirements for visual, the actual tree will help mitigate the noise, even though that that's not the purpose. In the additional phases, you'll see that there's, this is in addition to the environmental. When we have additional funds, there'll be some additional planting over here. And as the planting, the trees get bigger and fuller, that'll help with the noise attenuation in his property.
But we don't have that in our plan to do immediately? Or are you saying we're waiting until we get money to do that? The other thing that he is very concerned about is he feels like he's getting more fumes, I guess you would say, from the highway because of the changes that have been made. And I don't know if the landscape has changed down there at his end of the street or if there's no longer a business that was there that sort of helped shield- there's no longer a business that was there that sort of helped shield. Are you familiar with that at all?
Let me, let me address your first question. There is a little bit of trees that are going here just south of the elbow. So this is, this is what is required for the environmental aspect. So we will be doing this, plus we will be landscaping the medians on A and C Street as part of what we're looking to go out to bid this winter. In addition, there'll be these trees that will be in between the freeway and the off-ramp, and then also these trees between the off-ramp and France, and that should help with some of those other issues because you have, you know, whatever, carbon monoxide, which I believe the tree, or yeah, carbon monoxide, which the trees help mitigate those issues. So that'll help with when we plant those things because it's not just centralized to his location because air moves throughout the entire street. So it should help his issue, and that's what we're planting in the first go-around.
Have we discussed this with him or given him any information about our plans to help out?
I've talked to Antonio generally in regards to what we're looking at doing. I haven't sat down with him with the specifics of, you know, this is the types of trees we're putting in, this is where we're putting in, but I can do that.
Does he seem, that, does he seem like he feels that we're trying to help out with his concerns? I've talked to Antonio quite a few times, but I haven't talked to him lately, so I was thinking maybe, maybe he's getting encouraged or something.
We're doing our best to answer his questions and trying to address his concerns and within the parameters of what we have for funding.
Do we have any way of measuring the sound or the carbon monoxide or anything that's kind of hitting his house?
You'd actually have to pull in a specialist to be able to do that. There are, when you do studies, there are people that actually can measure what the sound is, what the carbon monoxide is. One of the things when you do any kind of transportation project, what you're required to mitigate is only the increased traffic. So we can't necessarily tell, you know, what was there before we started, if he actually says that there was some sort of increase. As we speak right now, this off-ramp is not operational. So where, as you can see, there's a little bit of a distance, because we purchased this property over here and purchased homes so that we can put the off-ramp. But where his house is, there's not a significant distance between his house and where Highway Ninety-Nine is, so.
And that hasn't changed?
Hasn't changed.
The Highway Ninety-Nine, the location, has not changed.
Right.
Currently, the off-ramp is not operational. So I, I would have to say with taking down maybe some of those houses, maybe he feels a little more exposed than he did before, but that's part of what we're looking at in putting the planting, is helping that exposure.
But he's part of our plan. We're trying to take his concerns into consideration. Okay.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
You may.
Also, I would also, in this equation, we might be able to talk with this gentleman and advise, and we have more traffic now on that frontage road going at a slower pace because that's where we have the detour diverted. So naturally, you're going to get more stagnant air, especially on a few of these hot days where we've had no breeze. So I'm sure he's probably noticed that a little bit, too. So I think maybe when the off-ramp is on, you're going to have vehicles going a little faster, and they're going to be pushing that air around a little more, and he probably will not notice it quite as much, is my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Sorry.
Okay. Was there anything else in this presentation that you wanted to share before I interrupted you?
I think we wrapped the questions point. I don't have anything to add. We would recommend that we move forward so that we can expedite following completion of the structural work and the paving and the grading to sort of take care of our lighted areas that are in weeds at the moment, and we'll get that cleaned up with part of this project. I just would point out that everything you see on the overheads is not all going to happen in the first phase. What will happen is some of the median work on A and C Streets, as well as some of the trees along the fringes that would provide a shield to the adjacent property owners. The infill areas between the interchange islands would all be subject to future funding availability. We obviously will do what we can to pursue available grants and other things, but at some point, it'll have to become part of the city's capital improvement program and decide if we're willing to match some of these other competitive options, including Measure A, that we could pursue.
Okay. It's in our plans. We just need the money for it. Okay.
And this design work will have a first phase that goes out to bid, but they will have designed incrementally the next fourteen units. And then we, as we obtain funding and determine priorities or get grants to do certain things, could then custom tailor a project to fit that funding source. So maybe we'll do Segment thirteen and Segment Two and Segment Seven, tailor it around perhaps some grant or match funding opportunities.
All right. Thank you. Would you read the recommended action for that?
Adopt a resolution. Number one, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number fourteen to the agreement for consulting services with Omni Means in the amount of $15,730 for the Central Galt Interchange Landscaping modifications. And number two, authorize a contingency of $2,350 for this contract.
Can we do both of these with one motion?
Yes, Madam. Move to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. So at this point, we, we have no communication, right?
No, but we do have one more item.
Okay. Oh, yes. G three. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, consider a late addition to the September fourth council agenda with a two-thirds majority members present to ratify its prior approval of the Transportation Development Act amended claim for fiscal year 2010, 2011, and project expenditure plan and claim for fiscal year 2011, 2012, and related budget changes.
The city attorney's giving you some explanation, but is there any other discussion or questions? Councilmember Singleton?
No, Madam.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought you.
I knew you were going to ask me that. I appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, just a quick insert and apology for sort of a late addition here. A question was asked and correctly answered that technically, we should have had a resolution with the last package, 2020 hindsight. The question was asked during the council meeting, and the city attorney answered that we did not have to have a resolution. We could act on the council's motion, which you did. We were subsequently informed just this past Friday that, that no, the funding source, SACOG in this case, is a standard requirement, requires a resolution officially adopted by the local jurisdiction to process our claim. And so this item is basically to reapprove what you approved two weeks ago with a resolution this time. And by putting it on tonight's agenda, which you've already authorized, it will allow us to meet the deadline and have it considered at the September eighteenth SACOG meeting rather than defer to October and hopefully save about $1,500 or earn an additional $1,500 estimated revenue, just due to the cost of money over time.
Okay. We realize this is important, so is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, I'll call. Do you want to read the reso? What you wanted to do?
Do you want me to read the action?
No, I think it's clear. I just, the record is clear, it's to adopt the resolution put forward by the Public Works Department.
Okay. We're ready for the vote, I believe.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you all for saving us some money.
Yeah.
Yes, you did. Okay. So now we are going to, we have no communication again, right? So we will now adjourn from the regular session to the successor agency. Roll call.
Board members, Powers, here. Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Present. How about comments?
I have no speaker sheet.
Consent agenda?
We have one item, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August twenty-first, 2012.
Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Motion through.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Board members, Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Shelton? Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item under departmental, DNS Loan Agreement Amendment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The former Galt Redevelopment Agency previously entered into an owner participation agreement with DNS Development for the rehabilitation of the Brewster Building, which is located at 201 Fourth Street in the amount of $1.258 million to assist in that renovation work that happened over a year ago. The first payment was due twelve months after the completion of the final payment that was made as part of that project. The first full payment due, actually was due August thirty-first, which payment was made and submitted by DNS Development. DNS has submitted a request to the city to defer further payments for twelve months to allow the new restaurant sufficient time to get its feet under it and to do well. Health and Safety Code 34181E allows successor agencies to modify existing agreements between private entities and successor agency. Approval of the Oversight Board is required. So if the successor agency does adopt this amendment this evening, then we would take it to the Oversight Board at a subsequent meeting for their approval, and we'd submit that to the Department of Finance for final approval. The finding that needs to be made is that it's in the best interest of the taxing entities that that loan modification occur. And our staff's recommendation is that it would indeed be in the best interest of the taxing entities because the city, the redevelopment agency receives property taxes from the building. City also receives sales tax right now from the restaurant. And for a short-term fee deferral is our estimation that it would contribute to the long-term success of the building and the restaurant. It would be therefore in the best interest of taxing entities to do that. There would not be a long-term, there would not be a waiver of fees, or there would not be a long-term. Eventually, the successor agency, redevelopment agency, would receive all of the funds from that loan. It would simply be a short-term deferment, again, to allow the, the building and the restaurant owners to successfully transition with the new operators. There are no general fund dollars involved in this transaction. It's all former redevelopment agency funds that is now kind of tangled up with the state and all that's going on with maybe fourteen eighty-four. As I said, none of the repayments go to the city's general fund, but they do go to the successor agency and are used to offset tax increment needed to make the enforceable obligation payments. A couple of meetings ago, maybe in the last meeting, we brought to you the revised enforceable obligation payment schedule for the next period. So tax increments come in to the county, and then the county uses those funds to give to the city the amounts we need to make those enforceable obligation payments. And then whatever money is left over gets distributed to the taxing entity. So this money just gets added to that pot in order to make some of those, those payments. So there's, there's not really a financial impact to the, there was no financial impact to the city. We believe there's actually a financial benefit to the city because of the long-term collection of sales tax and property tax from the, from the building. So the recommendation is to adopt the resolution, approve the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the owner participation agreement, grant loan agreement with DNS Development for rehabilitation of the historic structure located at 201 Fourth Street. And I believe the owners of the building are here this evening. If you have any questions of staff, we're happy to answer any questions. If you have any questions of the owners, they can answer questions as well.
Council? Questions?
No, I just have a comment. I, I think sometimes it takes, although we wish things to be right the first time, sometimes it doesn't work out this way, that way. I personally would like to give them a chance to, you know, work through their second set of owners there who I think have a better chance of sitting in here with the community and working on.
Thank you.
One of the things, actually, I may ask David to, I'll put David on the spot. He can come down here. One of the things they indicated to me is they really wanted to put this money to use for the business, so help with the advertising, help them, you know, succeed in this period of time and transition. And restaurant, the restaurant industry is a tough business, as we all know. And we had another restaurant that opened down there. We want both of them to be very successful. And David, maybe you could say a few words.
Good evening. I'm David Mealy. I'm president of the DNS. And we request in this because of the two problem we had in beginning, we take fully responsible. We didn't have the right group, and we make a mistake. And actually, part of the mistake is my son. He's here.
Quiet one, thank you.
I tried to go with the new generation. Tried them, but it didn't work out. And at the same time, the road, highway construction, a lot of problem we had. And after a lot of time spending and interviewing a lot of group, we find the right group, and getting back, starting business, and now the new restaurant open, and half of the sale is gone. And but the new owner working for the breakfast, for the Sunday, Sunday brunch, and a lot of equipment ordered again, and we requesting you give us a chance for our decision.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a few. You know, I appreciate the work you guys have done. You should be up here with your dad. You've done with that building. Oh, look, here he comes. I really love that building. You guys have done a beautiful job. But at this time, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, I think twelve months is too long. I understand you were shut down for three months, maybe four, because we had issues with the past restaurateurs. I would, I would be more willing to look at a six-month and then we can revisit. But I think if we, if council decides to pass this tonight, we're setting a bad, not example, but if we have other businesses come to us and ask us to postpone their payment, and I think we're setting a bad light on it. And I, I love you guys here, and I think you're doing a great job, a beautiful restaurant. But I would be willing to look at it for six months, but I think twelve months is just way too long. That's all.
Would you like to comment on his analysis or his comment?
We honestly, we didn't know all this construction going to go on the highway. That was honestly, if I knew this was going to happen, we delaying to open it because it totally killed us in the beginning. And the first group lost almost $300,000, and they gone. And I took some of their loss because they are on my tenant in the other business in town. And we try and make it up with them and make them happy. And the second group is now here, the payment is not enough to cover our expenses. We have a lot of expenses, and the sales should be around $90,000 a month to get break even. And I don't know if it's up to you.
Yeah, well, you know, we talked, she just talked about the bridge going to be hopefully completed by the end of October, so hopefully you'll get better flow coming to the restaurant and better understanding. I know we had some issues with people, confused on how to get to the restaurant. But as I've heard, a lot of people out of this area, they're more understanding how to get there, so. But that's all I have, is I would look at the six months.
At this point, two major restaurant open?
Yeah.
Is within the population we have in there. I don't think, it is hard to support. You know, we try, we're going to do a lot of advertising, we're going to change a lot of different things, but it's not easy.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
And I didn't know the other restaurant going to open the same big size and, you know, similar, a lot of items, same menu, and it's going to be a little bit difficult until the road open and hopefully the other entertainment coming to town.
Well, it's good to see that you still have cars in front of your restaurant every time I look down there, so, or your building, I'm sorry, every time I look down there, so.
Whatever you guys decided.
That would be my recommendation, is we can take a look at it in six months, but I, right now, I can't go with the twelve months.
Councilmember Cruz, did you want to comment?
If we were jumping on monies, I'd agree with you.
Not jumping on money.
No, no, I said, yes. There's a two-way word there. But given the fact that, and now I'm going to stick my foot in here, given the fact that the monies aren't coming from the city, and since our lovely legislature and our wonderful. Given the fact that the monies aren't coming from the city, and since our lovely legislature and our wonderful governor decided to take this away from us to start with, there's no loss here.
True.
We're gonna make money in the long run as far as revenues.
True.
And to be honest, as far as the governor legislature is concerned, this thing. So I'm all for the-
September on.
Yeah, it is. I'm all for the twelve months.
I just wanna be sure we're not setting a bad example.
I don't think we're setting a precedent, because, to be honest, RDA is gone.
I understand that. I'm talking about, you know, if we have other businesses that open in our city or that are presently with our city, that they can't come to us. Well, look, you know, DNS went and asked for a postponement. Why don't we go do the same thing?
I understand. But-
So I'm just trying to be, look at the big picture, that's all.
Sure.
And that's understandable, but I think everything's a case by case.
Absolutely. I agree.
Some people did millions of dollars to build a building.
Absolutely. RDA funds, right.
I think there's a lot of benefits, too, other than just the dollars. I can remember for how long did the citizens of Galt say, "We want someplace else to go out to eat" other than pizza, Chinese, we love all those. And I know I've talked to some of the managers and owners of the businesses in the industrial park, and they have corporate people that come into the community. And until this, until Brewster's opened, they had no place to take them. They would take them to Elk Grove, which breaks my heart to think that they would do that. So I think there are other investments to be considered here. I appreciate very much your concern for our dollars and our reputation as a council. But that would be my opinion to support the request. So where are we now? Do we need the recommended action? And you can stay, or you can sit out?
And thanks for joining your dad.
You're welcome. I can read it.
Adopt a resolution approving the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the owner participation agreement, grant the loan agreement with DNS Development for rehabilitation of the historic structure located at two oh one Fourth Street.
Are we ready for the motion?
I move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Board members? Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Just to make a point, you guys make good points, all of the council members. And your appeal was great, and so I've been persuaded. I say aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne? Aye. Motion passed unanimously. And it's always good to have an open mind.
Absolutely.
I think you did.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Let's see. Where are we now? Okay. We're now going to adjourn from the, what do we call this? The- No, I think it's successor. Isn't it successor?
You're successor.
Successor agency. Okay. And read adjourn to the regular meeting. And, yes. Please, ma'am.
Just a couple of reminders. Let's see. On September tenth, they will have a special Galt Youth Committee meeting at six P M. in the council chambers. On September twelfth, the Parks and Recreation Commission will meet in the council chambers at seven P M. September thirteenth, the Planning Commission will meet in the council chambers at six thirty P M. And that takes us to our next council meeting on September eighteenth. But just a reminder, on October twentieth, we will have the ribbon cutting for the Central Galt Interchange.
No, what? Wow. That's exciting. Yep. Okay. All right.
The date actually may be earlier than that.
Oh, that's even better.
Shouldn't have let that out of the bag.
They're supposed to start, was it tomorrow night that's gonna start the first portion of that? First person of duty.
Okay. So I take that back. We'll get, to be announced.
We'll get with you.
And I'd have S D A know that, and Brian is looking forward to the invite, so.
Get the date more.
Like when?
Okay.
Is that all you had?
I'm calling.
Okay. Next is comments by staff. Our new Public Works Director?
We're gonna be-
Oh, excuse me.
The California Cities Conference with council members and several staff. I think it's gonna be an interesting session. There's a lot of good speakers and good sessions for cities, and I'm looking forward to it.
I would just reiterate the invitation. I think at eight fifteen and change, that it's probably still light outside. If you'd like to see what's your new investment in a combination sewer cleaning truck, it's quite an investment, but it's, they're a wonderful tool and a great combination to work with our camera. We can clean and clear, and then go in and inspect and look for structural issues that are gonna continue to reclog and then establish a repair protocol for those. So anybody in the public is welcome. Parked out in the parking lot, you're welcome to come look at the truck.
Thank you.
Do I get to drive around the parking lot?
Could you bring the TV?
Can I drive?
Yeah, I wanna drive.
All right. Can I drive, please? I can see our interest going up here.
Hey, I've driven big with you.
Did you have to comment to me? Okay. I think we're past playing with the toy now. Let's move on.
I still haven't commented.
Well, we're ready for it.
Oh, now?
Yep.
Oh, can I drive? Yes. Class A. I just look forward to our trip down San Diego. I think it'll be very beneficial for us as council and to better serve our community.
Thank you.
No, I'm looking forward to it, too.
Okay. Councilman Cruz?
There are portions of it I'm definitely looking forward to. Anytime I can find my monies for the city, I'll be a happy camper.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. I would say before we all go out to play with the toy, I had a visit from the mosquito and vector control district. Ms. Rodriguez and David Brown paid me a visit this morning and said, which I think is serious and something we need to take into account, this is the peak for the West Nile virus season. So in addition to that information, they brought a goodie bag, which is floating around here somewhere. Okay. City Clerk's gonna, yeah, share it with the audience. There's all kinds of goodies from them, and I encourage you to take your share and before you go out to play.
Thank you.
Is that Vanna over there?
Yeah.
There's more of those packets. Don't you have more of those packets in City Hall?
Yeah. I have a few. We have some on the counter.
Okay.
For the public, if anybody needs some off wipes, we do have a few in the city clerk's office. I'm on my.
In addition to that, I have the latest newsletter, Bite the Bite, for the council members. And if there are any questions from the public, if you wanna know where it's at or how many cases are in the area, you can go to their website, which is Bite the Bite, wherever else goes with website and stuff. But anyway, I have this newsletter from them. And also, I wanted to mention, I had a very good meeting. One of the things on our strategic plan is to look at the local resources and see if we can leverage them to create jobs in Galt. And the new CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, Frank, who's out there, met, yeah.
There he is.
We met with Dane White, who is the ag teacher at Galt High School. He just received the Ag Teacher Award of the Year. I've seen his name in three newspapers. And anyway, he did an excellent presentation. And he also says, you know, maybe you look beyond dairy industry. And he suggests that we look at something called a food hub, which we're discussing that with SACOG to see what kind of research and help they can give us on that. So we are making some progress with our project. But we haven't given up on the dairies. We still want our cheese and our ice cream made in Galt.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
There you go.
Frank, did you wanna say more about that?
He didn't just get us in trouble by saying that on recorded TV.
Well, actually, I wasn't prepared to talk, but Mayor, City Council, thank you so much. My name's Frank Galdo. I'm the new executive director of the Galt District Chamber of Commerce. I've been here for a total of about forty-five days, and it's been like drinking water from a fire hose. Lots of great energy. I have to say, I'm absolutely in love with the city of Galt. And I come from a far, faraway land called Lodi. And there's been a real learning curve for me. And basically, what I'm discovering is that Galt has some amazing assets that are absolutely incredible. I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for connecting me to Mr. Dane White. Anybody who is a citizen of Galt should be very, very proud of the future farmers of America, of what's going on in our high schools, the kids that are coming out of FFA. It's my job with the Galt Chamber of Commerce to promote the local economy. And in order to do that, we have to look to our future, and that's exactly what our high schools are doing right now. Dane White, the presentation that he provided us the other day, this food hub, this was something that I think if we had to pay for it, it'd be in the range of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. I was totally blown away at what this high school teacher had did for us. I'd just like to say, and I don't wanna take a lot of time, but there are USDA rural grants that we are looking at right now. I've been spending a lot of time at the Port of Stockton. As a matter of fact, I spent all day today over there, speaking with a grant writer expert that's interested in talking to all of us about what next steps we can do here in Galt. This food hub idea that Mr. White has proposed is both realistic and possible. So anyway, just thank you so much. I didn't mean to take so much time, but I'm extremely excited about the future of Galt, and it's because of the assets that we have here. And our number one assets are the people of Galt. So Dane White, if anybody is watching this on TV, you need to shake that man's hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
What exactly is a food hub? Is there just a little definition of it?
You know what? I'm glad you brought that.
Is there a little definition of it, or?
I can persuade him to make a presentation to the council at some future meeting. So then you'll, then you'll know what a food hub is. Keep it-
So you can't tell me?
No, I'm not gonna tell you. You have to wait. Anticipation. The last thing I'd say is tonight was the last night for our Tuesday night market, and I think everyone felt very good about it. Armando, do you have anything you wanna weigh in on the Tuesday night market? Everybody ended up loving the location there at the Smud Park.
I really liked the location this year. I thought it was really nice. The vendors from the market appreciated being able to sit up there. They look forward to coming back next year. So we're just, start planning for that now.
Well, and it's time to say thank you once again to our Parks and Rec people for all the work they put in on it to make it successful. Couldn't have done it without them. So thank you.
I just wish it would run until the end of September, but appreciate all your work. I'll see you in your office.
If no one has anything else to say, we will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-five. Thank you all.
Seven twenty-five?